Welcome, everybody, to the Greenville City Council Workshop on January 9, 2023. Mayor PJ Conley will preside over the meeting. First, I'd like to call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Mayor Conley?
Here.
Mayor President Blatter?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Mayor Conley, have a form.
Thank you very much. Move on to approval of the agenda. Mayor Madam Chair, any recommend changes?
No changes.
All right. Most of them are in the council. We're smiling, same with councilmember Bell. All those are there as well as any?
Mission passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to new business. Madam Chair, our number one?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one is a presentation on revisions to the city's manual of standards, designs, and details. I'll call for Travis Welborn, who is a civil engineer three over land development, and he'll provide the presentation. Mr. Welborn?
Good afternoon, everybody. This item is the Manual of Standard Designs and Details, also known as the MSDD for short, the 2022 revisions. First, I'll give some background of what is the MSDD. It's the standards for building infrastructure within the city limits in the ETJ and includes details for infrastructure, including plan layout, erosion control, streets, driveways, parking lots, and storm drainage. The development community uses the MSDD so they know what the city's expectations are when they're building and developing within the city limits. It allows them to properly plan and budget potential projects and allows for consistency between projects and helps city staff treat every project the same and equally. Most municipalities of any size have an MSDD or an equivalent. So the reasons we're updating it, it was last updated in 2011, and we try to update it roughly every 10 years. One of the big reasons is we're removing a lot of details from our MSDD, and we'll go over that in a second, but we're trying to remove duplicates that are also covered by the NC DOT, and we're going to reference their standard specifications and details. We're also removing details that are no longer applicable or outdated. We're adding standards and details for new materials or methods that have come about since the last update, and then we're modifying details to provide clarification. As with anything, folks ask questions, or we realize something's not working right, we make adjustments. We're doing that, inconsistencies, errors, omissions, and even just misspellings, things like that. So the first thing that we did when we decided to embark on this journey, as I'll call it, updating the MSDD, is created a stakeholders group. It's made up of engineers, contractors, and developers from the local development community as well as city staff for both engineering and public works. The members were identified by city council at the August workshop, and we do have one stakeholder group member in attendance, Mr. Mike Baldwin. The group was established to provide input and recommendations to city staff regarding the proposed revisions. The group reviewed the recommended revisions as proposed by city staff, as well as they provided recommendations for additional revisions that we had not thought of. The group met monthly in September, October, November, and December, and they came to a consensus on the proposed revisions. The members were actively engaged in discussions regarding the proposed revisions. City staff held numerous staff-level meetings to discuss concerns raised by the stakeholders group once we presented revisions to them, and we actually went back and made several revisions to our revisions based on the concerns of the development community. It was an interactive process, a lot of back and forth. Couple examples of things that the city staff and the development community had multiple conversations on was pavement design and the proof roll process. So we'll get into-
Pavement design and what process?
The proof roll process. It's when we test a street when it's under construction, make sure it holds up to a loaded dump truck. We'll break up the most impactful MSDD revisions into groups. We won't go over everything because there's a tremendous amount, and a lot of them are minor and inconsequential, but there are some major ones that we're going to touch on today. This generated the most discussion and led to back and forth between city staff and the development community, and it's also these items are most likely to affect the cost of development. So I kind of touched on this earlier. One of the big things that we're doing is we're minimizing the MSDD. We want to rely on the Department of Transportation standard and specifications. You know, less is more. We don't want to maintain a huge book, so we're just going to rely on the DOT. We deleted details that were duplicates of the Department of Transportation. Some of the sections that we deleted the most things out of were stormwater basins and end walls, which were basically direct duplicates of the DOT's manual anyway. So we're going to add a statement that all development is going to be in accordance with the DOT, with the exception of any details that remain in the MSDD. And again, we may have extra items that are required above and beyond DOT or clarifications that we'll include in our manual. It also provides for consistency between contractors and engineers, between city and DOT requirements and projects. We all know a lot of consultants and contractors work for both the city and for Department of Transportation, and it just makes it easier for them and for us, everybody's working out of the same book. The next, what I call a large section, you know, a group of revisions is to right-aways and streets portions of the manual. The first change was we increased the pavement design minimum structural number for new streets. One thing that we've learned, the asset management division and public works and maintaining the streets, we're seeing most of our pavement failures in residential streets, and it's one reason is likely because we have more residential streets than other types of streets. So we felt like a small change to the minimum pavement structure for residential streets could have a big impact to the city moving forward as far as maintenance and longevity of the streets. This is something that the stakeholders group was on board with and agreed that, hey, this change could have a significant impact on our operations and the lifespan of those streets. Not only that, it'll make it easier for us when we have to go back and maintain the streets in the future to do that with a thicker pavement section. Another thing that we did, we're going to allow private streets for townhomes and multifamily developments that will require some ordinance revisions that will be coming back to the council for at a later date, and I have another slide that will talk about that in a little bit more in depth in a minute. But we're going to revise the private street detail so that it matches dimensionally that of public streets. So even though there'll be private streets, they'll be the same width as a public street. We clarified the asphalt testing requirements. We're going to require cores for thickness verification in addition to the DOT standard testing requirements. This is something that most of the contractors do already anyway, so it's not a significant change. Also, there's going to be no parking on dead-end streets with no temporary turnaround. We've got, it's difficult for sanitation and other departments in the city when there's a dead-end street, especially a narrow residential street, and there's cars parked sometimes on both sides of the street. Those folks have got to get large vehicles to the end of the street to service sanitation, you know, yard debris, street sweeper, things like that, and if they get to a dead end and they can't turn around, they've got to back out. So we're trying to minimize the number of incidents and occurrences that has to happen. The developer will be responsible for installing no parking signs on a dead-end street if there's not a temporary turnaround.
What's a temporary turnaround?
Usually, I'd call it a hammerhead, or it could be a cul-de-sac just made out of rock. We call it temporary. Some of them end up being there for years, but I guess you call it temporary because it's just rock and they're typically not asphalt. If it's going to be there permanently, usually it's a cul-de-sac that's paved, and there's lots around it. But sometimes if you stub out to an adjacent parcel and you know that street will be extended in the near future, you just build a hammerhead, and that allows the fire department, trash trucks, moving trucks, what have you, to turn around without having to back down the Another change that is going to be implemented, we're going to eliminate the exemption, the sidewalk exemption for minor residential streets and cul-de-sacs, and this will also be an ordinance revision. The picture is a good example of a street in the city. You know, this cul-de-sac right now is not required to have sidewalk on either side, and you can see that the main street that it ties into does have a sidewalk. So these folks have to walk down the street or through other people's yards and then cross the street to get to the sidewalk. There's also no ADA accessibility there, so we're going to require all streets to have a sidewalk, at least on one side. A residential and collector's street in a new subdivision would be required to have sidewalks on one side.
Does that work in the cul-de-sac itself? If halfway around, we stop?
Typically, we would stop at the throat of the cul-de-sac. You know, it's not usually as busy with traffic as the street itself, so they can, we'll usually have a handicap ramp right there, and they can get on the sidewalk, access the sidewalk, walk down the side of the street, and then cross the street on some other routes. The old exemption was only for cul-de-sacs less than 500 feet or looped streets less than 1,000 feet. Most developers are putting sidewalks on those streets anyway. There's a few situations where they initially submitted plans without them, and we've had discussions. I think of a good example, we had one recently where there was a mail kiosk, and, you know, I talked about it with the engineer, and he was like, you know, it's a good point. They've got to access the mail kiosk. There needs to be sidewalks so those folks can get to the mail kiosk. So it's an accessibility thing and a quality of life thing.
Wow, that was easy.
Also, we're going to incorporate the city's lighting standard into the MSDD. City council adopted the lighting standard back in January of 2013, almost 10 years ago to the day. So the street lighting portion will be incorporated in the MSDD, and we're going to include the parking lot and exterior lighting portion in the zoning ordinance. This is actual, an actual rendering that was submitted to us for approval on a recent project, so this is actually submitted to us for approval. Shows a parking lot with what the lighting plan would look like. As far as street lights, you know, it costs the city money. We have to go back, and the developer builds a subdivision, and then we accept the street, and after the fact, find out that there's not enough lighting or it doesn't meet the standard. We're responsible to go back and add those lights, and it costs money to pay for the underground, so we're trying to do a better job of looking at that during the street acceptance process and making sure that the appropriate number of lights are installed upfront, because that upfront cost is borne by the developer, not the city. The next section of the MSDD that we're proposing revisions is, or discussing, is drainage and stormwater. The first item, we define different types of swells and ditches and when they are applicable. A lot of people are familiar that we have an ordinance that says all ditches that require a, less than a 48-inch diameter pipe must be piped, and we're not getting rid of that ordinance. However, we are going to allow for swells, backyard swells, vegetated conveyances and other conveyances due to, like, low-density development in certain situations. That'll all be coordinated with the new stormwater ordinance that will be brought to the council in the next few months. We did also increase the minimum easement width on small diameter pipes and on the top, top of bank of ditches so we can adequately maintain that infrastructure. That's something that public works requested, and we discussed with the development community, and there were some back and forth on that and some minor revisions, but we all came to a consensus on what we ended up with.
Is this the goal, to make sure this infrastructure just persists into the future? Seems like we've run into a few places where there was a swell. Over 25 years, the swell disappeared as people who regarded it as their backyard, you know, it filled in, they silted in, maybe it cared, maybe they didn't care, and now there's no swell there anymore, and so you're getting flooding upstream. If they were in pipes, then, you know, you can't gradually remove a pipe, right?
Correct. So if there is a swell, so that, actually, the easement helps you with that, so if-
What's a swell, personally?
A swell is just like a really shallow, gently sloped conveyance versus a ditch that has more vertical banks and is usually deeper, carries more water. So we're adding details into the MSDD for both. Swell, I think we define with a maximum depth of 36 inches and three-to-one minimum side slopes. So again, it's something that a homeowner can maintain with a lawnmower or you could walk across. A ditch, we're going to allow to have two-to-one side slopes, and it can be, you know, the depth is not regulated. That's something that typically probably the city would maintain or an HOA. It's bigger, and it's not something that a homeowner is going to most likely be maintaining.
And talking to Rick, to councilmember Smiley's point about them disappearing, it seems like they're also going to erode.
And actually, that's part of the detail. All the detail specifies that they have to be stabilized, and we've also got the erosion control ordinance. We inspect those items during the street acceptance process. We inspect it during construction for erosion control, and before we accept the streets, we ensure that all the conveyances are adequately stabilized. Now, we also, you know, to his point, you know, let's say the builder goes out there and maybe his landscaper regrades the lot and accidentally fills the swell in or something like that. We do residential erosion control as well, so we look out for that type of situation, and that's the benefit of the easement also. You know, if there's a property downstream of your property and there was a swell and the water's always gone there, and then there's an issue and it's not being maintained, the easement should provide access so that it can be maintained. Now, it's a civil matter. If it's private water, the city doesn't maintain that, so it would be their responsibility to actually maintain the swell, but the easement gives them the right to go in there and get that maintenance taken care of. For the pipes, you know, most, any pipe that carries water downstream of a city street, even if it's through a backyard, you know, the city maintains it, and that larger easement helps us keep fences and bearings and sheds off of that pipe and allows for public works to have access with adequately sized equipment to get in there and dig whatever size hole they need to get in there.
Does the new, or does the recommended change, would you say it increases or decreases the amount of pipe that would go in versus swell?
It's, it's probably not going to change it a whole lot, honestly, if I had to guess. If anything, it's going to allow more situations where you could use a swell or a vegetative conveyance, but honestly, that's dictated more by the stormwater ordinance and some of the, you know, the low-density options and treatment swells that they have. But most of the developments are high-density anyway, so I think you're still going to end up with pretty much status quo. But when those swells and ditches are acceptable, now we at least have details that dictate how they're going to be constructed. We also are going to revise minimum cover for storm drainage infrastructure for pipes, you know, different materials, corrugated aluminum, polyethylene, polypropylene, reinforced concrete. The DOT in their manual has a detail and has standards for that, and we're going to abide by that. We establish limits of the hydrograde line calculations and minimum freeboard. What this does is the engineer calculates basically in a closed pipe network, the water surface level during a 10-year storm, and what we're trying to do is verify that the design does not allow for flooding of the streets during a 10-year storm event. Basically, that water is staying in the pipe or in the box, not staying out into the street. Obviously, if you have something happen, and you get a beach ball in a pipe and it clogs it up, those calculations aren't going to work for that, but at least you know that those pipes are adequately sized originally. We also clarified the record drawing requirements for new city infrastructure. We want to require enough information to confirm compliance with the original design, but we don't want to be burdensome on the development community. That was another item that we went back and forth with a lot, with the stakeholders group, and I think we came to a good resolution on that item. So let's talk about implementation and permit choice. So we're proposing, we're going to have these revisions go into effect on July 1, 2023, the MSDD and the ordinance revisions that we're going to talk about in a minute. You know, this gives the development community time to adequately plan for the changes. If they have a project approved prior to the effective date, they will be required to meet the existing regulations. However, if they submit for a project but it is not approved prior to the, if they submit prior to July 1, but their plans are not approved until after July 1, they can choose to be vested under the current regulations, or they can choose to follow the new regulations. It's called permit choice, and that's established by the North Carolina general statute. However, one thing we will require is that they note on the plans what set of regulations they're going to follow. So city staff, the contractor, the developer, engineer, everybody's aware. It's going to be a, I'll call it a process to work through. We're going to have projects under construction. They could be immediately adjacent to each other, going under construction at the same time, and one could be being built to the current regulations and one could be built to the new regulations. And it's just something we're going to have to work through with city staff and the development community, and it could be, it could go on for a couple of years like that. Hopefully, there'll be a limited number of developments that we deal with that on, but there will be some that we have to work through that on. As I mentioned, permit choice is established by the North Carolina general statute, and if you submit what's called an initial development permit prior to the effective date, and the effective date is between then and the time your plan is approved, you get permit choice. This is just a list of initial development permits. I'm not going to read them all out, but one thing I will say is that that permit choice is valid for 18 months from the date of your initial development permit approval, and also, an erosion control permit and/or signed permit is not considered an initial development permit for permit choice per the statute. So if you submitted, if you only submitted erosion control permit, that is not on the list and specifically excluded by the general statute. So the ordinance revisions that I keep mentioning, you know, we're going to try to present the necess, the ordinance revisions are brought about because of the MSDD, the revisions to the MSDD, and we're going to try to take those to P and Z in March and then bring it to city council in April. In addition to the changes necessary because of the MSDD revisions, we're also going to clean up some discrepancies that remain from the creation of the engineering department approximately three years ago, and again, we're going to have those ordinances go into effect the same date as the revised MSDD. That pretty much concludes my presentation. I did want to mention that we don't need a vote on this item. The city engineer has the authority in the ordinance to revise the MSDD, and we just wanted to present these items for informational purposes, and I'll take any questions.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I know that these deal with a level of detail that has more to do with how to put things together, and not necessarily big-picture concerns, but something that I, I'm not, I think what I'm saying is I'm not sure it can be addressed, but it may be able to be addressed, which is environmental concerns. I know that stormwater and stormwater regulations really are doing the heavy lifting when it comes to environmental concerns, but do the new MSDD standards reflect a greater level of environmental concern?
So like you mentioned, really, the vast majority of the environmental regulations that we have are in the stormwater and erosion control ordinance, and the new stormwater ordinance, in my opinion, certainly is a stricter ordinance in regards to environmental regulations. We're not really proposing any major changes to the erosion control ordinance. I'll say this, we had an audit last year from the state. We're a delegated program, and we, we got accolades. We did, they said we're doing a great job with our erosion control program. Nobody's perfect, but they, they said we're doing a good job. The MSDD really doesn't contain any environmental regulations or details. It's really like how to lay pipe, how to build a box, what the street has to look like. There's really nothing in there related to environmental regulations.
Such as materials?
Well, there's materials, but not for, like, how to build a pond, like a stormwater wetland, that's not contained in the MSDD. There's materials like whether you use metal pipe or concrete pipe or plastic pipe, and actually, we don't dictate that you have to use one or the other, other than we say, when you use that type of material, this is the specification that you have to meet.
Thanks.
So walk me through, please, the changes to private streets you referenced?
So private streets, back in, I believe, 2014, I've done a lot of research on this. We've had a lot of conversations. It looked like the city council was trying to prohibit private streets for single-family and two-family attached, aka duplex developments. So what, but private streets were never taken out of the MSDD. They're still in there right now, the details. And in the ordinance, in chapter four and chapter five, there's some places where the ordinance states that private streets aren't allowed, and then you go to the next section, and it specifically states that they are allowed. So I'm, we're trying to clean that up, and based on my research from the minutes from planning and zoning in city council back in 2014, it appears that the wishes of the city council was to prohibit private streets on single-family and duplex developments, and so that's what our intent is, to revise the ordinance to reflect that, basically, clean it up. And we are going to allow for townhomes, apartments, condominiums, multifamily developments.
But those, but even when they're, but I understood you say that even when they're permitted, they would still have to be built to the same standard as-
Correct, and that's another thing we want to address is, in the rare circumstance that a development like that, they wanted to get that street accepted by the city, at least if it's built to the same dimensional standards, then that makes that process a lot easier. The only difference is we're not going to require sidewalks on a private street, and it's going to be in an easement, still going to be in a 40-foot easement. So if they ever wanted to get it accepted by the city in the future, they would have to convert that to a right-of-way and install the sidewalk.
Yeah, because I think I was there during these votes, so for me, it's, you know, still a research project, but it's like, you know, digging through my memories. You know, the concern was that there were failing streets that we, that were essentially impossible to bring into compliance and therefore adopt. impossible to bring into compliance and therefore adopt. There's another issue, though, that, and again, that's not really an engineering issue, but I bring it back up just because, just for institutional memory, is there turns out, it turns out that there are restrictions on what we can do in terms of like picking up debris and things on private streets. You know, the FEMA, for instance, will pay us to pick up debris on public streets, but privately owned streets cannot be, and that has bitterness in the ear occasionally when we have private streets. So there's a couple of different reasons that we're, that my, according to my memory, that we were trying to get, were minimized, get rid of the number of private streets. One of them was just the engineering challenges of ever, of ever solving the problem, of ever getting them into the city, even if everybody wanted them to be in the city. And the second one was the emergency response challenges of just?
Right, and that's one of the main reasons that we wanted to make sure that specifically for single-family and duplex, you know, though, it's, you don't have a lot of trees, most time you have an HOA in a multifamily development that maintains all the landscaping, and they'll have a contractor come in. But if you had a quote-unquote multifamily development that was actually just single-family houses all in one lot, then those people would want us to come in there after a hurricane and pick up their debris most likely, and like you said, FEMA may not reimburse us for that. So that's, like I said, we're going to require single-family and duplexes that's going to have to be built on a public street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm curious about, about why we choose to have some streets be private streets. Is it because they're, they're so small, or help with the cost, or what's the?
Setbacks is one reason, and a multifamily development, also driveways, Lisa and I were talking about this, this morning. In a multifamily development, they're really not conducive to public streets because you've got to have dumpsters, you've got to have parking spaces. We don't want perpendicular on-street parking, we don't allow that. We don't want dumpsters in the right-of-way dumpster pads. So, you know, that's something that the HOA or the owner of that development is responsible for, and that honestly takes some responsibility away from the city that we probably don't want, if I had to guess.
In the end, it's up to the developer and those allowable places, whether or not they choose private streets or not. That's not a decision that the city's telling it, it's the developers making that decision.
And they're allowed with the multifamily and the?
Yes, ma'am, multifamily like town, unless it's a single-family home or duplex home multifamily development. So you could, it would be called multifamily, it would look like a single-family development, but if you built a whole neighborhood full of single-family homes, and we have had folks approach the city about doing this, but you say, I'm going to own them all and rent them out, I'm going to own 25 single-family homes, they're going to be on one lot, and I'm going to retain ownership and rent them out, that would be a multifamily development. But even that multifamily would require public streets. Because I think one of the big things that we've discussed is, that's going to look and act and feel like a public street, whether it is or is not, and that's where we run into issues.
So if they ever do subdivide it and turn it into individual lots, they're never going to be able to rebuild the road and move, you know, and make it meet a standard we can take in.
And that's why we'd require it upfront.
Yeah, it's got to be in there to begin with.
Yep.
And again, just to read the last bit of this is, if they have a private street built to public standards, we would maintain it if they conveyed it to the city. So there's a real incentive if they have to build to that standard anyway, to go ahead and make it a public street, though clearly they might be edge cases where a private street makes sense for them.
And we'll, we'll definitely talk about that in much more detail in April when I bring those ordinance revisions, because that's going to be one of the major ones. I just want to go ahead and bring it up, because that detail, again, it was never taken out of the MSDD, so it's just, it's really just going to stay in there, you know?
I'd be offended if you called your preference.
They're probably much worse.
Ms. Baldwin, let's say something.
Travis and Lisa and just everybody in this room, I was one of the stakeholders involved in this, and I just want to, and I can tell you without even asking the other engineers, architects, utility contractors, street builders and developers, this couldn't have gone any better. We were involved, you know, when it was done back in 2010, and just the whole, the mood, the way the meetings were carried out, the receptiveness to our comments, and the way that sometimes the staff, the Lisa and Travis did have to draw the line, did they did it? You know, y'all, it's, it's hats off to these, to these two. And I can tell you without a doubt, that comes from every single person, whether it be engineer, builder, architect, it is across the board, everybody shared that same thing. And that's, that's what, that's what Ring was all about, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I know y'all wondered and thinking, why is he aggravating us on Monday? Should get him up here on Thursday. I'm out of here. Thanks for everybody.
See you. My fault, my ladies and gentlemen.
Mike Robb.
He has spoken. Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Lisa.
Enhancement to the main entrance of Brown Hill Cemetery, and Kevin Mulligan will have that presentation.
Enhancements to the main entrance of Brown Hill Cemetery. Good afternoon, everyone. So a little background, city has four cemeteries, Cherry Hill, Greenwood, Brown Hill, and Homestead, and you can see some of these are quite old. Cherry Hill came around in 1872, up to Homestead, which was in use prior to 2003, but we acquired it in 2003. So, and just some logistics about where Brown Hill is located, South Greenville Rec Center, South Greenville Elementary Schools on the southern border, and actually, the public works sites on the northern border. So that is where the Brown Hill Cemetery is. This is the current entrance to Brown Hill. So the main entrance, which is what this is, has always been on Howell Street, which is where this entrance is coming off of. And so this is the area, we're looking to upgrade this, this doesn't quite match with the other three cemeteries, and I'll show you what those look like now. This is Cherry Hill Cemetery, this is the intersection of Pitt Street and Second Street, and you can see that, that brick wall, this is our oldest cemetery. The upper right picture there in the corner, we see a couple of brick columns and a, and a dirt or stone roadway into the cemetery itself, into the Cherry Hill Cemetery. So a mixture of brick columns, brick wall, and fence. Greenwood Cemetery, this was revamped in 2014, there was a car accident, this is by St. Peter's Catholic Church on Fifth Street, this entrance is off of Fifth Street and right by the intersection of 10th Street, car coming down that hill a little too fast. The actual columns used to be right in the middle of this road, this was a single-lane entry and exit. So the car hit those columns, hit the fence, and so we had to redo this. So this was both an aesthetic and a safety improvement back in 2014, so we took the columns out of the roadway, decorative fencing along the side, a couple of columns there, some landscaping improvements. You see this sign in the back, more on that in a few seconds. So Homestead Cemetery, again, I just referenced a car accident at Greenwood, there used to be a brick wall here, a car took care of that back in 2008 or '09, and so we made some landscaping improvements to sort of buffer the view of Homestead along 10th Street. Again, Homestead has its main entrance off of 10th Street, Greenwood has its main entrance off of, off of Fifth Street, there's a side road on Greenwood called Cemetery Road, but the main entrance is off of the main road, and the same with Cherry Hill, it is off of, off of Pitt Street. All right, so city staff, let me introduce Kevin Heffron. Kevin Heffron and myself met with the stakeholders to discuss what sort of enhancement we would, we would see or look to put in place there, and also where would we do these enhancements? We looked mainly at the Brown Hill main entrance because that main entrance of the Brown Hill Cemetery has always been off of Howell Street. And some of the enhancement types followed suit with what we did at Greenwood, what we've done at Cherry Hill and at, at Homestead, brick columns, decorative fencing, road improvements, signage and landscaping. The stakeholders group, we met with them both at our conference room and then out in the field to show them exactly where, out at Brown Hill Cemetery, show them exactly where we were proposing and what we're proposing. Very positively received this, very receptive to what we were proposing, and I believe this next slide is a picture of what we're, this is an rendition of what we're looking to do at Brown Hill. So one of the things, we want to widen this road, this is showing the actual road, we want to put columns here, decorative fencing, some landscaping, but we do want to widen this road. So that's one thing we'll do. The second thing is the entrance roadway, this is that widened road, we'll look to have concrete wheel paths with the stone in between it, and then a grass median, it would be concrete wheel paths, stone here, so it would, we think it'll have a very attractive entrance. Again, the brick columns, decorative fencing spanning 150 feet on each side, that will go down to Skinner on the west side, about 150 feet extending on the east side, as well as some landscaping. And this next slide will show you, as we come into this entrance here, we'll put a sign there that identifies the Brown Hill Cemetery, much like this sign at Greenwood Cemetery. That will be facing in the, in the area that's open for, for that signage, and we'll announce that you've entered Brown Hill Cemetery. All right, so this shows the extent of the brick columns as well as the decorative fencing. See, it goes all the way to Skinner, and then 150 feet to the east from, from the entrance.
Can you go back to the first one, please?
Yes, ma'am. So we propose there'd be brick column here, one as it, as the fence kind of slopes down, and then one 150 feet down. So that'll be the termination point of the, of the decorative fencing. And here's where that sign would be in an area in front of those graves.
And go to the question?
Did that interfere with some of the graves? That seems like something's missing in that second one.
So this probably won't be as long as it appears in this, in this picture, this rendering, moving back to that. So it'll be wider here, and we'll have the concrete wheels pass, but they'll have, we'll have to maintain the existing dimensions of, of the roadway. Wherever there are graves now, those graves remain, and we'll have to build around that. All right. All right, so again, here's the proposed brick columns, fence, the entranceway, the signage, you know, maintaining that main entrance, that location. Just sort of summarizing enhancements, improved roadway entrance, there is a, it's actually a utility pole right here, we'll need to relocate that, that'll be the first order of business, which you see. Decorative fencing, brick columns, signage, landscaping, cost estimate for this, and the budget we have available is $75,000.
That's for either design.
What's that?
That's for either design, it's $75,000 for either design?
It's the same.
It's the same.
It looks different to me, the interest of, see that, yeah.
The second one is just a rendering, that's just.
This is, this is, I'm sorry, so I'm not being clear, this is showing the brick columns and the fencing, but it doesn't capture the roadway improvements that we're doing. So this is just showing the brick columns and the fencing, and this is again showing the brick columns, but this is the road type of enhancement we'll do for this entrance.
But okay.
All right. So this is just meant to show the roadway entrance.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So, complete in summer of 2023.
Tonight on the council agenda under the budget ordinance is the appropriation of contingency to fund the project. Tonight on the council agenda, when you all are set to consider the budget amendment, that shows the appropriation of $75,000 from contingency to fund this project. So once we have the money, we can start ordering the supplies and start doing what we need to do to get the project moving forward.
The sooner the better.
Some landscaping outside.
Yeah, that's gonna, it includes landscaping. On the outside, but there is not, there's not a lot of landscaping in the inside, other than what's around the sign.
That's right.
Have we identified all the graves over there?
We have some of the graves that are available, but some of the graves that are on the, sort of the upper hill, we do not have all that specific information on those graves.
I think they know that there's a grave there, I just don't think they know whose it is, right?
Correct.
Do they know, like, that all the names of the people that are in there, or it's just a matter of identifying the actual location?
No, they do not know.
Because some are so old, just, these are the families.
Questions, have we identified, are all of the graves and occupants within Brown Hill identified?
No, there's a section called Cooper Field, where there's, there were some graves from decades ago that are unmarked, that we just steer up, we steer away from doing other than just basic mowing and maintenance. We don't, we don't do any excavation in there at all, we treat it very carefully.
There's Cooper Field, and there's an area northwest of that where we don't, that pre-existed before the city took over, that we don't have records for.
Markers for the graves, I know some of those had kind of disappeared, are we going to fix that so they can be seen clearer?
Those are private.
How are they private?
To the individual families that are on.
But I'm saying how, just the little one, like E4 and stuff like that, not, not the, yeah, the markers.
Directional markers that identify the sections.
Correct, uh-huh, not the headstones or anything, yeah.
Certainly, take, look at some of those directional markers that would indicate the sections. What we aren't going to do are the headstones, but we can look at those directional markers. We can, we'll take a look at those direct, what we might could do on those directional markers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan. We'll move on to item number three, Madam Manager.
Great, thank you, Mary Tano. Item tonight is a discussion about the American Rescue Plan Small Business Assistance Program. Tiana Berryman will have this presentation. As the council will recall, the council has set aside funds within the ARPA dollars to fund assistance to small businesses. Tiana has worked with a group of folks to sort of put some guidelines around how it is that we would allocate those funds.
I think you missed one word, though. She said something about like a short presentation, I think she said.
I've said short.
All right, so yes, I'm here with updates for the ARPA Small Business Assistance Program. As you recall, in the fall, the proposal for essentially a $500,000 cut of that ARPA funding would be allocated for small business and nonprofits. Tonight's proposal suggests $400,000 of that being. Tonight's proposal suggests $400,000 of that being designated for the Small Business Program. Okay? So the intent of the SBA, as I refer to it, will support small business development, growth and continued recovery from the pandemic. And funding of up to $50,000 will be awarded to small businesses for completion of approved projects that yield some public benefit. So public benefit, qualifying public benefit includes enhancement and expansion of the city's tax base, creation of local jobs, limitation on business need for relocation, and enhancement of local businesses' ability to maintain or expand operations. Okay? So the goals of the program include supporting existing businesses that were disproportionately impacted through the pandemic, including rehab of new or existing commercial buildings and support of startup businesses that include investment in commercial buildings or improvements or operating costs to assist with business development. All right. So eligibility is based on physical location, the number of locations, number of employees, gross sales, interest good tax standing and other requirements that will be detailed in the application. Here's a map of the qualified census areas for this program. You can see much of Uptown, north of the river, West Greenville. And then there are areas along Arlington and Charles that are also included. Eligible expenses include building rehab, upfit and/or expansion to existing commercial real property, facade improvements, commercial equipment, machinery, furniture or fixtures with a useful life of greater than five years. All right. So scoring is based on achievement of the goals, budget projections, financial documents and experience, acceptable credit history and background check, and not receiving previous COVID-19 assistance. So applicants must receive a score of at least 45 of the available 60 points to be eligible for assistance. And final funding decisions will be made by the city manager or his designee. All right. There are two funding rounds potentially for the program. The first is projected to be, to open March 1st of this year and run through May 30th. And then if funding remains available, the second round will begin October 1st of 2023 and run through September 30th of next year. All right. So essentially, this evening is for informational purposes only, and I'll bring back the proposed policy next month for consideration and adoption.
Man, that was short. Golly, I should say...
Sure, that was very short.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I've got one.
Okay.
Probably will have several. For, you said that like equipment can be purchased with the funds. So like what if you were a bakery that purchased an oven?
Let's not, let's not, let's just go right at it. Let's not be around the bush. Like a pizza place.
I've already got, I've already got an oven. I'm good. I guess like the, I guess my question there is like, is there a way for us to carve the equipment part out? Because for me, it's like the concern would be if a business opens up and they go out of business, that oven, you know, doesn't really have any value. Whereas if we carved that out and made it where it had to be strictly invested into the building, like, you know, hard assets. I guess that's hard asset also. But, you know, something that is stuck in place.
So, okay.
Removing equipment and just building improvements?
They're going to sell that equipment off. It's lost dollars. Where if, you know, we get a building approved, you know, that stays.
Equipment that will last more, for longer than five years. But certainly, if the council would prefer to not fund equipment and just do building improvements, that is it...
I'm just asking if it's possible.
Right. That could easily be possible.
I'm fine with five years, though. I think if you're doing it for five years, that's honest, an investment. I mean, it is an investment.
Yeah, I mean, goals definitely not to have a business fail. I'm just saying, it's a reality of the situation. So I'm just curious.
That's a decision the council...
I have a question. You had several questions?
I made.
Okay. Okay. How many of these are available?
So if...
$400,000 divided by 50.
Eight. So I guess if they were, if they were all funded at the maximum available award, we'd have a total of eight. So essentially, as few as eight. But if there were partial awards, we could do more. If there's not enough... Oh, I'm sorry.
I was supposed to notice this. Just dropped the presentation.
But yes, so partial requests, we could fund more. If there was not as much interest as we're anticipating, then these dollars could be shifted into another program.
And that's going to get to my potentially last question, which is how are you going to sort of publicize this and let people know it's out there without having a crush of applications? It's kind of a fine line you've got to walk.
Sure. I think we were successful with social media, newspaper. Word of mouth is always really big. We do have, I think also when we had other COVID, our CDBGCV business program, we did like a Facebook Live that generated some interest. We did like a Q and A if there were businesses who were interested and wanted to know if they might be eligible. Without getting too specific, you know, they could come on and ask us questions. So we're open to being flexible and creative.
Thank you.
What, to accommodate individuals? Then you have some morning sessions and some afternoon sessions?
So I believe that was for, we've made, we've made some shifts with a variety of programs, and we'd be happy to do the same with this one.
Been great.
Okay.
Also look at Uptown on Greenville as well as other organizations to help you some information out there.
Could you get back to the score, Robert, please? When you say three-year budget projections, are you talking about the businesses' budget projections, I guess?
That's correct.
Are there going to be any requirement in there? Like somewhere like the smaller competition we used to have, like they had to attend certain classes at a community college and all that? Is that going to be something to be required as well? Where would that fit under? Is that...
That's a requirement that they have to show us that they completed it in order for it to be an eligible application.
This will be done on a reimbursement basis. So in order to receive reimbursement, you would have had to show proof that you have attended those classes.
Cool. Thank you.
And in previous receipt of COVID-19 assistance, I'm presuming you get fewer points if you've got...
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you. So without any objections or concern, then what we will do is add this policy to the council agenda in February for your approval, and then we'll start the first round of funding, open up the first round of applications to begin March 1st. Okay? Good deal. That's all we have for this evening, Mayor.
All right. Perfect. All right. Motion made by Councilwoman Smiley, sent by Councilwoman Bell. Do adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All right.
Motion to adjourn.